Online now, counting down, ten.
Welcome to the City Council meeting of November 21st, 2024. I'm calling this meeting to order at 7:32 PM. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Clerk, roll call, please.
We have no requests under Roll Call Item A, so I'll start the roll call now. Councilmember Cunningham.
Yeah.
Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Lentz.
Here.
Councilmember Mackin.
Here.
And Mayor O'Connell.
Here. Thank you, we couldn't quite hear you at first. I'd like to adjourn the meeting in memory of Doug Ryder, the city's former deputy building official, and Carol Nelson, former community development director. And also, we are going to be removing Consent Calendar Item A, I mean M, excuse me, as in Mary. Can I get an adoption of the agenda?
Adoption of the agenda, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, oh, do we need to, we need to do roll call?
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz.
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin.
Aye.
And Mayor O'Connell.
Aye. Thank you. And that moves us to Oral Communications Number One. Is there any members of the public wishing to make a comment on an item not on the agenda? And I have one slip from Michelle Salmon.
Michelle Salmon, Brisbane resident. I respectfully request that the City Council and the city extend the comment period for the draft EIR for the Guadalupe Quarry project at least an additional sixty days. This is a massive document of over eight hundred and forty, eight hundred and thirty-nine pages or whatever, and over three thousand pages of appendices. I've begun work on it, many other people have begun work on it, many other people are just like, oh my God. And I think that if you really want community engagement in this very important project that affects absolutely everyone in Brisbane and everyone in the wider area, that we should have a reasonable amount of time to thoroughly review the document. If we don't do it now, it is going to come up throughout the process after this, and will put roadblock after roadblock for the Planning Commission, for the council, for everyone, trying to make a decision on this if we haven't done the work, groundwork now. We had fourteen months to go over the draft EIR for the Baylands. And we had numerous community committees and groups that worked on it. It was a massive amount of work. This is not quite as large, thank God, but it is still a massive amount of paper. It's like, you know, four or five thousand pages. If you read straight through it, an average of two hundred and thirty-eight words a minute, it would take you over twenty-seven hours just to read it. That doesn't include looking up any of the acronyms, any cross-references, any, anything else. And that's just a rough estimate based on, you know, four hundred and sixty words a page. And that doesn't include referencing all of the data in the appendix. And I've looked for stuff that I can't find. The city website search functions are really in not good shape to be working through this. And it's really frustrating. And I think that the community should have the time they need to review this extremely important development project. The quarry, the, the, the project has already, you know, taken a couple of years to even get to this point. So they certainly took their time preparing what they needed to prepare. We should be allowed to take the time that we need to respond. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak on an item not on our agenda tonight? Seeing no hands, do we have anyone online?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, then we will go ahead and move on to awards and presentations. And I will be proclaiming November 2024 as National Native American Heritage Month. Whereas long before Europeans settled in North America, the ancestors of Native Americans were the original indigenous inhabitants, explorers and settlers of the lands that have since become the United States. And whereas it is impossible to fully understand the history of California without understanding the history of the indigenous people who have lived within the current boundaries of the state for thousands of years. And whereas California is home to more people of Native American heritage than any other state in the country. And whereas there are more than one hundred federally recognized Indian tribes in California, and several additional tribes are petitioning for federal recognition through the Bureau of Indian Affairs. Whereas the Alonee, a band of distinct groups of indigenous people who spoke similar languages, thrived in the land now known as Brisbane, San Mateo County, and other parts of the San Francisco Bay Area. And whereas the Ramatush are a part of the larger group of the Alonee, Costanoan peoples who lived in San Mateo and Brisbane in ten small tribal groups, and who prior to the arrival of the Spanish in seventeen sixty-nine numbered approximately fifteen hundred persons. And whereas due to devastating policies and practices of European explorers, missionaries, settlers, and various levels of government, the Alonee lost most of their population and land. Whereas National Native American Heritage Month provides Brisbane the opportunity to learn about the Alonee people, their role in the history of the county and the Bay Area, and their efforts to keep their culture alive. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Brisbane City Council hereby proclaims November 2024 as National Native American Heritage Month, and to encourage all residents to share the history of the indigenous people of California, including the Alonee of San Mateo County, and find time to acknowledge and express gratitude towards the original residents of the land on which we reside. And that's dated today, November 21st, 2024. Thank you. We don't have anyone here to accept the proclamation. If the clerk could accept that for them? Thank you. We will move on to the Item C, Brisbane Building Efficiency Program awarded a 2024 Helen Putnam Award for Excellence. And presentation from Montana Cruz and...
Staff members Adrian Atherton and Caroline Chung. So, good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. I'm pleased to stand before you tonight with my colleague Sustainability Manager Adrian Atherton. As a way of background, we applied for this award last April when Clay, after returning from the CalCities Conference, mentioned to me, we should really try applying for Helen Putnam. We're doing a lot of innovative things here. So the department's gathered and it was decided that we'd put in an application for a sustainability program. And it's the building, the Brisbane Building Efficiency Program under the category of Entry Planning and Environmental Quality.
Thank you Caroline and Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. So the Brisbane Building Efficiency Program is one of the city's key climate action strategies to reduce emissions from the built environment. The CAP had envisioned a program focused on homes, but upon investigation, we decided to focus instead on industrial and commercial buildings, including multifamily, because they contribute roughly three times as much to our local emissions. We successfully sought grant funding from the Air District in 2018 to launch the program. And their support, as well as the consulting team from the Energy Coalition, and our city leadership, yourselves included, were vital to bringing this program to life. We looked to similar programs around the state and nation, but also made important innovations to tailor it for our community and drive the policy landscape forward. Nearly five years after adoption, we are starting to reap the benefits as we are gaining crucial insights into our building sector through several years of energy and water benchmarking reports. And the first bench, beyond benchmarking audits and improvement cycle is underway. It has been a significant undertaking, and it is rewarding to see our efforts recognized with this award. Thank you.
So when it was announced to the Mayor and City Manager in early June that our submission had been selected for a 2024 Helen Putnam Award, we were elated, Clay especially. But we were told we couldn't announce the award publicly until the conference began. And that was last month. So unfortunately, we couldn't say anything until after Clay retired. So tonight is a special night made even more so by the fact that our Division Manager from the League, Montana Cruz, is here with us in person for an official handoff. So I'd like to invite him up now to share more about the award. And while he does so, ask Ingrid to play a short video that the League put together during the conference and showed during their general session.
Brisbane is leading the charge on climate action with some electrifying changes. Most buildings use methane for heating and cooking. As a result, buildings in Brisbane account for over forty percent of the city's greenhouse gas emissions. The city implemented new rules requiring property owners to complete audits, retrofits, and improvements for certain large buildings. Nearly every affected owner has completed the required reports. All this effort is expected to cut citywide emissions by over five percent.
Okay. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers. I'm Montana Cruz, Regional Public Affairs Manager for the League of California Cities, or CalCities. Thank you for the kind introduction. It is a pleasure to be here tonight to honor the City of Brisbane with this Helen Putnam Award, especially so as I'm growing to learn about your fantastic work in the Peninsula region. Just a little bit about the award. So Helen Putnam, from Petaluma, in nineteen seventy-eight, was the first woman elected president of the League of California Cities Board of Directors. Helen was also a mother, schoolteacher, principal, mayor, and county supervisor. Excellence to Helen Putnam was shown by someone who did their very best and shared their best with their community. And in her honor, CalCities established the Helen Putnam Award in nineteen eighty-two to recognize outstanding achievements by California's four hundred and eighty-three cities. With this award, CalCities awards just twelve cities each year throughout the state for innovation that serves the needs of your community. So this year, we received well over one hundred and seventy-five applications. And the winners were announced at the CalCities Annual Conference in Long Beach. There in Long Beach, we played that video you all just saw, and we're grateful that your Assistant to the City Manager Carolyn Chung and Sustainability Manager Adrian Atherton were able to accept the award on behalf of Brisbane. Today, I'm here to present the award at home amidst your community. So Brisbane, Brisbane received the Putnam Award for Planning and Environmental Quality. As you all know, Brisbane is making significant strides in climate action by implementing new rules for building audits and retrofits, which are expected to reduce citywide greenhouse gas emissions by over five percent. To the community, Mayor, Council, City of Brisbane, and staff, I genuinely congratulate you on your commitment to an informed democracy through transparency and education. So this, without being said, this award is very much deserved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we, can we do a photo op and invite our City Manager, who's going to continue Clay's vision of climate action, and to join the council? And Ingrid will help us take a quick photo of the council members.
Does this work?
That work?
Doing the Vanna White. Thank you so much. And it's a beautiful word, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to the Consent Calendar. And we have removed Item N. So can I get a first and second to adopt Consent Calendar? D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L?
So moved.
Hold on, I have to recuse for K and L. Recology and Southside Francisco Scavenger are board members for the chamber, which I serve as CEO, so I don't want there to be any miss.
Okay, and does, to recuse when she's on Zoom, does she just turn her camera off for this vote?
I would defer to our attorney, but I, I think the attorney prefers stepping out of the room. Do you have a preference, Tom?
As she will, because she's remote. Camera off and the volume off, and then come back in a minute, please.
Okay, so can we just do...
So can we get an motion to approve D, E, F? Oh no, okay, I'm taking off K and L. D, E, F, G, H, I, J.
So moved.
Second.
On roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz.
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis could be on that.
Yes.
Oh, she just left. She left already, though.
We'll have her cast when she comes back.
Okay.
Okay, and then Mayor O'Connell.
Aye.
No, I was moved, I was moved out of the meeting. I was put, I was taken off from being a panelist, so...
Can we recall that, can we recall that vote, please?
Okay. Councilmember, Council...
Madison, we just need to know you don't participate, so mute and volume down, leave the picture up.
Yeah, I, yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz.
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin.
Aye.
And Mayor O'Connell.
Aye. Thank you. And then, can I get a motion for Item K and L?
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz.
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin.
Aye.
And Mayor O'Connell.
Aye. And Councilmember Davis recused. Brings us to City Manager's report on upcoming activities.
Thank you, Mayor.
Are we moving, I'm sorry, are we just removing M entirely, or...
We're removing M entirely.
Oh, okay, I thought we were removing it for discussion, got it.
Nope.
Thank you. I have three words for public and council. Festival of Lights coming up on December eighth. I hope everyone's as excited as I am. It's my first, and I hope to see everyone out and participating. I'm going to leave it there because that's a premiere event and that deserves its own moment. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And then we go to Mayor and Council Matters. We have Ad hoc Quarry Subcommittee Creation. Is it the intent of staff to create the subcommittee and appoint members tonight?
Yes, through the chair, that would be my preference, to take both those actions.
My only concern is we will have a change of, of council for the effectiveness of this committee. Should we wait until we have that newly elected person present for his discussion on whether he wanted, wants to participate in that?
Happy to defer to a later date. I'm also happy if the council wanted to have a brief discussion tonight about the need for that preference to, to you and your councilmates.
How would the council like to proceed on this? I, I know that it's been brought up that this gets extended, the DEIR on that. I'm not sure if we can discuss that at all tonight. Or if creating the subcommittee has opened a door. I'll, I'll look at the city attorney to see if that's something, or if we should bring it up. You know, it's still Mayor and Council Matters. So what, what does the city attorney think on that?
I'd prefer you not get into it, because it is just Mayor and Council Matters. But if it's just procedural, that's okay. If council's talking about giving direction or taking action, please don't go that far.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Davis, your, your hands raised.
I would like to hear from staff about the reasoning behind wanting to have a subcommittee and kind of what they perceive will occur within that subcommittee.
Okay, I think that's a fair question.
Happy to answer that question, Councilmember. And this has been a practice that I undertook in Portola Valley when we had meaty items that deserved council attention and participation. As with major projects such as this, there's a variety of issues that do come up over the course of, of the life of the project that it is very helpful for staff to have a level of, of support and guidance associated with it. This project could include a development agreement, so I think it would be helpful to have council members participating earlier in that process to inform that as it moves forward. Ad hoc is by nature just related to how long we need it. But there are always things that sort of come up during a process. And instead of having that come later, I think it's great to have that come earlier. So that's my intent. We, as I said, in Portola Valley, we did that a number of times, and I always found it to be very successful. It was a great way to ensure that we weren't missing something that was within the purview of that subcommittee. We can tailor it to, to particular issues, but I'd like to have it somewhat broad in order to bounce ideas off of. Thank you.
Does that answer your question, Councilmember Davis?
It does.
Okay. Is there any more discussion on this, or should we table it till we have the newly formed council so that we can have our new council member weigh in on this?
You can, you can actually do both, but I would just... You can, you can actually do both, but I would just encourage you to wait till you have next year's council because that's the one that's going to act on it as well. So have to table it till then.
Okay. I, I, I mean, I think that going ahead and giving staff direction to form a subcommittee is, is fine. And we can bring it back for the decision and, and more of the discussion when we have our, our updated council. If, if that works. And when would, since we don't really have another meeting before the draft EIR comment period closes, how or what would be a way or a mechanism that the council could use if we were to want to request an extension of the DEIR question? Comment period. And I'll ask that of staff. Or staff attorney?
Well, I'm, I'm happy to take a stab. And then, Tom, if you, if you want to, to jump in. The, um, couple thoughts. Uh, the first is the, the council can direct staff to place this item on the neck, the agenda on December 5th, should it wish to. Secondly, um, I've, I've received, um, I would say half a dozen or so inquiries since the EIR was released to extend the comment period. That includes both residents and also the Loma Prieta chapter of the Sierra Club. The requests that I've received have had varying amounts of time associated with what the extension would be, the, what the extension would be from two weeks to 120 days. Um, the city manager has the authority to make that decision. So I am, I am considering those requests. And in a email that I sent earlier today to one of the residents who made a request, um, I indicated that I would be making that decision very early next week. The council, um, though, could absolutely place this on the December 5th agenda. Um, I understand that that has happened in the past. And the council has directed my predecessor to extend an EIR related to the balance.
So would, please go ahead, Tom.
All I was going to say is I think that those two steps, those are the two steps you need to, to know. Everything Jeremy says is spot on, but I would say he may, if he chooses, he does have the authority to extend for the fifth. So you, if you're going to put it on the fifth and, and he already has extended, you may want to just take it off when you get to the fifth. That's all. Not take it back up.
Okay, okay. And, and the council is good with, with that approach at this time that we place it as a, a marker on for the fifth agenda? And if it needs to be removed, that it can be?
Are you talking about the potential extension?
Potential extension. The, the subcommittee formation will be either on the fifth or the next meeting, whichever the, the staff appreciates they want to do, but it would be after the swearing in of our new council member.
Sure.
I would assume that would be the 12th then.
Excuse me?
I assume that would be the 12th then.
That perhaps, yes. Yeah, that would be. I'm, I'm not sure that public comment is appropriate on mayor council members discussion. Is that correct?
It's not appropriate now.
Okay, thank you.
But I like that direction that, uh, you know, it's been.
I mean, we can't be giving total direction, but that's sort of.
Well, we got to give direction to staff to put it on the agenda.
Yeah.
Well, and, and if I could, through the chair, I mean, it, the, this might be just a little too nuanced for all this, but, um, but any one council member can, can ask the, the, the mayor to place it as well. So any one of you could, could call Terry tomorrow and suggest we'd like to put that on there and that would be the mechanism to do so. Um, so there's, there's a couple of different ways you could get to that.
Okay. Well, we, we don't want to be violating any laws here with what we're suggesting, but we are suggesting that it, it gets addressed before the deadline of the sixth. And I think that while it's problematic for the public not knowing what their deadline is, you know, that's the, the situation we're in at this exact moment in time.
Right.
Well said.
Any other? We have, we, should we move on then to?
Through the chair, I, I'm sorry if I misunderstood. Is, is the council tonight going to create the ad hoc or would, are you tabling both the creation and the appointments?
No, I think we can create the ad hoc and we will appoint to the ad hoc once we get the, uh, full updated council.
Thank you.
It's mine.
Yeah, I think we're all.
Looking around, making sure I've got a, an agreement here. Is there anything else on the mayor council matters?
Nothing from me.
No. Okay. And then, um, countywide assignments and subcommittee reports. Anybody have anything?
You know, I, I do.
Please.
So this morning we had a commute.org meeting. And the last item that was, uh, before the board was that the, the model for commute.org, you know, we get, the, the agency gets significant amounts of money from the transit authority and from, you know, MTC. But the model also gets money from the private sector. We're supposed to get 35% from the private sector to help fund the shuttles. But we're having issues with, um, businesses funding and, and they're not, they're not obligated to do so. And so, um, this is something that John Ford brought up to the board members today and it was very sobering. You know, the start of the beginning of next year, cities are going to submit their, uh, applications for routes. And, uh, many cities are going to find themselves having their routes cut. And potentially Brisbane could be one of those cities. And so, uh, you know, I, I've been working with Jeremy and the staff at commute.org to come up with some strategies to help us try and shore that up. And, um, you know, a lot of people in our community depend upon that shuttle. Taking them to the Bubba Art Station or to Caltrain Station. It's, it's that last mile journey. And so, um, I just wanted to, you know, inform the council that that we could have a bumpy road with our shuttle service, uh, next year.
Okay. Anyone else have subcommittee meeting they'd like to report on?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had a Peninsula Clean Energy meeting on the 24th. It's the annual board retreat focuses on development of a strategic plan. Strategic plan in the past was a five-year plan and now it's being, um, compiled as an annual plan. The focus is on new energy sources, uh, programs and PCE programs are monetary incentives both to commercial and residential customers. And also we dealt a lot with how to ensure more clean energy sources at the lowest rates. That's still paramount for Peninsula Clean, Clean Energy. And notable was mention of City of Brisbane as a PCE customer, being a recipient of incentives from the government building electrification program. That program assists local government with funding and financing of large-scale electrification projects. And of course, the reference was being made to our pool electrification project as a star example of this program implementation and how it will serve as an example to other peninsula cities of what can be accomplished. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And that was one of the items that was on our consent calendar.
May I ask a question? The, the electrification of our pool. Do you have the numbers of how that's going to reduce our greenhouse gases? Or Agent, if you don't, by doing that, I, I know it was a big deal, right? It's just a, a point of interest I think would be very interesting for the public.
You are going to challenge my memory here. Um, I think it may have been in the consent agenda staff report, so I'm going to pull that up real quick. I believe it is something like 80%?
I think it was 80 or.
Our municipal operations emissions. Let me see if it's in there.
86%.
86%, yes. So of, of all of the emissions from our municipally owned buildings, 86% of our natural gas usage in that one project.
That is so impressive.
Yeah.
I know I read it and then I couldn't remember what it was.
It's a very big deal.
Worthy of making sure the public really got to hear that one.
Yeah, thank you for highlighting that. It's a, it's a really big project. It's a really big deal. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I did have a San Francisco Airport Technical Working Group meeting. And we discussed, um, landing and, and work. We actually had the FAA in attendance at the meeting being helpful and answering questions. Not just the questions that had been submitted 90 days in advance, but actually asked, answering some of the questions we had in the moment about, um, implementation and adherence and carrot and stick incentives to get airlines and air traffic control to adhere to some of the offset landing procedures, which would put them a mile out over the bay instead of right over Foster City and some of the other, uh, affected communities. And that for every, if you double the distance of the plane from the monitor or where the noise is being heard, you lower the noise by 80%. So it's really a major thing if we can get the planes to be over a mile away from the population. And on the same thought process, we asked the FAA for ways that when planes take off on normal traffic nights, between our quiet hours, which unfortunately are one till 5:00 AM because they say there's too much traffic at other times, if we could get them to not make the turn so hard that they continue back over population and down the peninsula. And so the FAA was actually very helpful in some of their suggestions on how we could move forward and actually get a little more compliance from the airlines and from, or that might work to get the air traffic control to not grant, um, shortcuts to planes until they reached a certain elevation. So they weren't granted, pretty much the FAA said, if a pilot asks for a shortcut and we can do it, we give it to them.
Catch and release.
Asked. And so, um, we wanted to see if there was a way to put a limit on some of the shortcuts that, well, once you get to 10,000, sure, we'll grant shortcuts, but under 10,000 feet, we won't. Um, and maybe that's not going to be what the suggestion is, but they were actually very helpful on how we could say and try to get air traffic controllers to not be granting some of the shortcuts as quickly and as without any question. So that we could help some of the residents, not necessarily Brisbane because they've already made the turn around us, but to some of the other flights that would affect the peninsulas down, going down the peninsula late at night. So we'll see how that goes and, uh, but it was very nice and refreshing to have members from the FAA there that were willing to step outside the box and actually answer our questions. It's been, you know, several years where we don't just say you asked the wrong question, we can't answer. And so, and you have to do those 45 days in advance. And, you know, if you didn't word it right, they're just going to say, wrong question.
So was it a different person that you were interacting with?
We still had one of the regular people that we interact with, but we had two. Excuse me. Long-term ex-tower people that could, that were willing to talk to us.
Okay. Nice.
So it was really, really actually quite refreshing meeting to go to. Anyway, that's, that's it for me. Madison, did you have anything?
Uh, Karen, do you want to report out on our October public art where we, uh, selected the artist?
Yeah, sure. So this process of the Alvarado Street, uh, Alvarado to San Benito staircase. Just in case anybody's listening that needs a little background, it was a, a grant that took us many, many years to get the money from CCAG to put in a staircase. The staircase is a public works project from a safety perspective and just the, the normal staircase. However, um, part of the public art, um, fun, funds are now going to enhance the staircase with arts from two different artists. One is going to be working on the railings and the lighting, which is incredible. And the second artist is going to be doing mosaics on the staircase. I do want to give a huge shout out to Noreen for the incredible amount of work she got to do this in an impossible timeline. And so her and her staff couldn't do it, but we said, let's do it anyway. And they did. They worked so hard to get this done. And now we had, we had RFPs from some incredible artists come in. And the artists that we've chosen to do the art part of it, combined with having our senior public works engineers involved was quite miraculous. And so I am very excited to think that we are going to have this beautiful and functional project coming very soon. From the grant side of it, we had a timeline. That's why there was such a squeeze. When you get a grant from CCAG for any reason, you have a certain amount of time that you have got to use that money. And so I'm saying it was impossible to pull it off, but I have to say staff pulled it off and we have this gorgeous project. Do you want to add to that, Madison?
Just that, uh, the, the people who are doing the railings and the lighting will collaborate with the, um, mosaists so that there's cohesion between the two. But we're really excited. Um, the people who are doing the railings and the lighting are going to kind of have sort of like an arched entryway. So it's really clear to the public that, that there's a stairway there. Cause for so long that stairway has kind of been incognito. So they're going to. Yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna add some wayfinding elements to it and they're going to create like lighting, that'll look like it's coming from like giant flowers or plants. They did a lot of research actually on, um, the types of plants that are native to San Bruno Mountain. So they're planning to incorporate that. And then they're going to use those like different plants that will be small lighting throughout the, throughout the staircase. So there'll be like a big, big lights at the top and at the bottom. And then little lights throughout that will kind of look like different plants that we have here. So it's going to be almost like the thought is like an enchanted, um, staircase. And so, um, this is a traveled route for a lot of kids. So I think it'll be excellent for them to experience. So I think it'll be excellent for them to experience this and also, you know, just kind of enhances that experience for regular walkers too. So we're really excited and we think that stairways in Brisbane could be places where we might have future art installations and we're excited to see how it turns out with this staircase and it might be, you know, the first of many.
And, and just to add one more thing for people who don't know, San Benito to Alvarado has been a, a mud pile for years and, and, and in dire need of something happening. And one of the reasons we got the grant was because from a safety perspective is how I sold that to get the grant was, you know, our children are walking to school down San Benito Avenue to the elementary school and there is no sidewalks. These children are walking down a very dangerous street. So finally CCAG agreed that this fit the bill from the safety perspective. So from a safety perspective, aside from how beautiful this is going to end up being is we get our kids off that unsafe street once and for all.
And I think just one clarifying thing, I know we kind of, Karen and I have talked about this a few times, but specifically what occurred in that meeting was us meeting with McGrath Arts who will be doing the railing and the lighting, just because we wanted some clarification about what they could do and hear more about their vision. And so that meeting, we specifically met with them and then Karen Kinzer was there as well so that we can kind of have a meeting of the minds of like what's possible and what isn't from a public works perspective so that Public Works knows what they're going to go out to bid for. Like obviously they're not going to go out to bid for lighting when the, when McGrath Arts is able to do that. So we just kind of had to have like a meeting of the minds so that Public Works knows how to write their RFP or how to select their contractor, et cetera.
Well, great work on that.
Yeah. Yeah. You know, I'm curious, Karen, is this going to be the design? Or is this something that they've done before?
This is something they've done before and they will be working, the, the two, one of the things that was really great about having these two different artist groups is quite often a, an artist group is not going to want to collaborate with a completely different artist. So there's always this push-pull with things like this. These two artists we chose individually, but they have agreed to work collaboratively to make this seamless. But that's an example of the work. That was one of the reasons this particular artist was chosen. Everybody was completely blown away by how beautiful it was, so.
Yeah, no, super exciting. Yeah, looking forward to seeing that final design.
Yep.
Great. Any other subcommittee reports? Written communications?
Madam Mayor, written communication was received from Mr. Wu and Dr. Fan regarding the Guadalquivir quarry project.
Okay. Thank you. And that brings us to oral communications number two. Would any members of the public would like to speak on? Yes, please, Michelle.
Thank you. I'm very excited about the stairway. I used to use that pathway when I was going to school and it was dangerous then, very dangerous then, and it still is. The timing for the December 5th meeting, I hope you decide long before that whether you're going to extend the draft EIR comment period. First of all, if you only extend it 20 days, it's not really going to help much because like eight of those days are weekends and holidays because it goes right into Christmas. But the other thing is, is that we're currently trying to be on track to give all of OSEC's comments to Adrian by December 1st so that she can compile them and we can review them at a December 3rd meeting, which puts a tremendous amount of pressure on OSEC to get through the entire document. And so if you are going to extend it, we could do a much better job at our job by being more thorough, more complete and being able to cross-reference several things. I hope you make a decision soon if you are indeed willing to extend it past the holiday periods that are in December and January. So I, that's why I asked for a minimum of 60-day extension from the December date. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to make a comment? Seeing no hands, do we have anyone online?
Madam Mayor, we have CMF.
Hi there. This is Chris Plarkowski. When Cliff mentioned commute.org meeting this morning, I was hoping that he would acknowledge that they were also soliciting input for their new strategic plan that they want to develop. And to my ears, I heard an invitation to city staff and members of committees and the such to also step up and participate. So I hope that that invitation will get extended to our committee, such as Safe Streets, even Park and Rec, I have noticed occasionally will address transportation issues. And it would contribute to Brisbane making public transit a more visible part of our thinking here as we consider sustainability. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public?
No, Madam Mayor.
No? Okay. Well, with that, I would move to adjourn the meeting at 8:22 p.m. Thank you so much.